Another snowy Tuesday morning. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody and remind you to silence your cellphones. The meeting documents are available for your review down on the end next to Commissioner Karski. And Carol is here if you need any listening device this morning. So go ahead and start with routine business. I consider a motion to approve the agenda.
I'm moved. Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is the commission meeting minutes for February 12th, 2019.
Approve the minutes.
Second.
Seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is bills to be paid in the amount of $821,918.41.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Any comments? Commissioner Bar.
Madam Chair, this includes $294,000 in the library fund that we remitted to the city of Sioux Falls, which is part of our partnership with them.
All right. Thank you. So we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item, we are reports. We have Minnehaha County Sheriff's Report for your review. There's a Register of Deeds Official Statement of Revenue Collected in January for your review. And we also have the Auditor's Financial Reports. And we have Kim Adamson. She's going to give us just a brief overview of these as they're kind of new reports using our new system. Good morning, Kim.
Good morning, Commissioners. There are a series of reports provided to you that summarize 2018 results as well as activities so far through January of 2019. I want to just touch on a couple of the high points on the information that's been provided. So if we could start by just looking at the general fund cash balances. I'd like to point out our beginning cash balance in the general fund this year was $13,858,000. That is $687,000 higher than last year at that time. So we did build our cash reserves by that amount during 2018. And I've got some other reports to show you where those reserves came from. But first of all, I'd also like to talk about where we are at the end of January. If you see, we've, our cash balance has declined to $9 million. And it's $3 million lower than it was at the end of January 2018. Not really a point of concern. It's just a timing difference between activity last year compared to this year. We had three pay periods in the month of January this year compared to only two last year. That had a one and a half million dollar impact to cash. And then if you'll recall, in 2018, there was quite a push for taxpayers to prepay their property taxes. And so if we compare January tax collections, 2018, we collected 1.8 million. And in 2019, only just over 300,000. So that's, you know, another one and a half million dollar impact to cash in January. So we will expect that our cash reserve will get back on track with where it was last year. Not really any budget concerns at this point.
All right. Any questions for Kim? Questions about that? Commissioner Bar.
Thank you. Kim, I think most people probably don't understand that we have basically two paydays a year for the county. Could you maybe push the screen up so that we could see the, the, well, there's the, that one there. And that shows that, you know, we, we get a big influx of cash when people pay their property taxes twice a year. And then the rest of the year, it dwindles.
Correct.
So, you know, the first jump is April and then it's November. And then in between, we have to pay everything out of whatever we've got in the bank.
Out of the reserve. Correct.
Anyway, thank you.
Any other questions for Kim? Commissioner Benega.
Kim, can, when we got the bank franchise tax, did we get any explanation from the state on why there's such a significant variance from last year to this year?
No, we did not. The increase, the actual, the, what am I trying to say? The total distribution we got from the state was up only about $200,000. It was seven million versus 7.2 million. That gets apportioned to the various taxing jurisdictions in our county. And about three years ago, that apportionment formula was modified. And it went to, it's now based on the proportion of the total levies in the county. And one of the things that happened in our favor in 2018 versus 2019 is that we got a slightly larger share of the pie, basically, because our countywide levy was slightly higher than the other jurisdictions in our taxing districts. So we benefited from that along with just a very slight increase in the overall dispersment to our county.
But compared to budget, that was a dramatic difference.
It was. We, our budget was a pretty conservative number. And it was based on about a six-year average. We have, in the last three years, realized pretty significant rates of bank franchise tax. We did increase our budget for 2019 to 900,000, which is still below what we actually collected in 2018. But we have inched that budget up. And it's certainly something we can consider for 2020 as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, I just want to further comment on the chart, which shows the revenue for the past eight years or so. And in 2012, there, we were at one point under $2 million in the bank. And that was a terrible year for us in the sense that our budget for that year was smaller than, in, our budget in 2012 was smaller than our budget in 2009. And, you know, we were actually in a situation where potentially making payroll and getting through the year was going to be tough. And so we've had good years and bad years. And that was probably the worst since in my 13 years of being here.
Well, certainly, that was something that informs all of our decision-making when we can see that that can happen. So we have to, there's a reason to be conservative when we're building our budgets.
Well, I will point out that at our lowest points during the year, our cash reserve dips to about six weeks of operating expenses, around that $6 million level. And I would expect that to remain so in 2019.
All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate these reports. Thank you. Okay, so that takes us to our next item, personnel actions. And it looks like Jen is here this morning. I'd entertain a motion for the routine personnel actions.
Move approval. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Thank you. Next item are abatements. There are none. Item seven, notices and requests. There are none. Item eight, planning and zoning notices. There are none. And item nine, petition for compromise of lien.
Here she comes.
Here comes Melinda. Thank you.
Short legs.
Good morning, Melinda Storey, Commission Assistant. The Commission Office received a petition to compromise lien DPNO 82860 in the amount of $4,441.90 for legal representation recorded between 2016 and 2018. The petitioner is requesting release of a lien in full with no payment. She has been unemployed and unable to make payments due to financial hardship. Her assets total $9,000. She also expressed that the two lien representation fees, legal representation fees recorded January 12th, 2018 totaling $3,517.90 are unreasonably priced. They are not reflective of the quantity and quality of time she spent with the attorney. She's unsatisfied with the representation received and believes the attorney did not act in her best interest to move forward quickly based on the charges. She explains in her narrative that after review of the court record transcripts, she has determined that the attorney not only prolonged the cases, excuse me, by continuing to address mental health issues without taking into account the results of the competency evaluations, which were in favor of the petitioner. She is not able to attend this morning. She actually started a job at nine o'clock and had to report. She did stop in to request that the board consider reducing the amount of the last two entries of the liens, which is the 1,625.70 and the 1,892.20. She's willing to pay on the other lien fees, but is asking if you would support her in reducing these two amounts.
Are there any questions for Melinda?
Madam Chair, you know, having reviewed this, I am not in sympathy with doing anything today. That's not to say I wouldn't want to do something going forward. These last couple charges are within the last year. And I think we should wait a little bit here. We don't charge people interest on these things. And I see back in 2013, she paid off the $800 in full. I really appreciate that. And I really appreciate small payments that show good faith going forward. But I think it's too soon to make a decision. I'm also aware that there may be some other factors involved in this that I would like to look into further. So I don't know if, if we were to turn it down, does that mean they have to wait a certain amount of time, Melinda?
No, she can come back next week again if she prefers.
Or maybe defer it for a period of time here. I'd like to wait and see if, if we can stay out of trouble for some time and then make some small payments.
Any other? Commissioner Karski.
I'm not in favor of deferring. I'm just, I think not approving it overall would be the appropriate thing. I don't see any payments since, what, almost six years? And as Commissioner Barz pointed out, most of the charges that she's having to pay an attorney for are fairly recent. She's not buying a home. She's not needing it for financing. Any of the typical reasons that we would consider forgiving this. So I'm, I'm just not in favor of doing anything at this point and in the future. And, I mean, some of these, we look back 10 years and more before we even started approving. This is only a year old. So I'm, I'm just going to vote totally against approval of this.
Any other comments? Commissioner Benega.
I would agree with what's been said. I don't think until we have a plan in place from the petitioner that we should do anything but frankly defeat this request and wait for a plan that we can see some hard numbers with. When I look at the charges versus the issues that are listed, I think they're reasonable. Our public defender and public advocate's office per hour charges are less than what I would consider normal for the community. So I think we need to have a better plan in place before we approve anything. Make a motion to deny.
I'll second, but I'd like to make another comment.
Okay. Commissioner Bar.
I just would concur with what Gerald said about our public defender, public advocate are immensely discounted. And, and we also know that those people are quite effective at representing their clients. And to go out in public and hire your own attorney, I don't know, Jean, it's pretty spindy, isn't it? Anyway, so I, that's my comment.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. I need a roll call vote. Sorry. Benega?
No.
Karski?
No.
Bar?
Aye. I mean, nay. Sorry.
Point of order. Yeah, we need a point of order because was this a motion to?
To deny.
Deny? Then I'm sorry. Okay. I would like to change my vote.
Can we start over?
Yeah, sorry.
Start it again, then.
Benega?
Yes.
Karski?
Yes.
Bar?
Aye.
Bender? Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone.
Rewire my brain here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melinda. The next item is an opportunity for public comment. If there's someone here today who would like to speak about something that's not on the agenda, this would be an opportunity for you to come forward. I don't see anybody rushing for the podium. So that will take us to regular business. And first item in regular business is to consider an appeal of a decision by the Minnehaha County Planning Commission to approve conditional use permit 19-05 to allow a class C CAFO. Kevin, good morning.
Yes, Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. This item is to hear the appeal, as you just said, of the Planning Commission decision to approve conditional use permit number 1905 to construct a 2,400-head swine finishing concentrated animal feeding operation. The staff has received two separate appeal letters. And both of them were provided to the Commission prior to this hearing. Conditional use permit number 1905 is located on property approximately three miles southwest of Hartford, as shown on the map here. The proposed barn is to be located adjacent and southwest of the petitioner's farmstead and to be platted as a separate entity. And I'll kind of move that down to my next map. That you see in green there. The existing farmstead does contain a small CAFO for beef and buffalo. As you can kind of see, there's some brown area on the map. And the petitioner is aware, or should be aware, that the existing CAFO is not allowed to exceed 250 animal units without first obtaining a conditional use permit from Minnehaha County. And in this case, with our ordinance, a permit from the state DNR as well. The petitioner has submitted site plans, as shown, and a narrative which address all required site plan elements. The, in addition, the proposed barn will meet the 1,320-foot buffer from the nearest dwelling, church, or business. And the buffer shown in red on the site plan here. The petitioner's narrative includes the required elements of the zoning ordinance. Manure management plan indicates the manure will be contained in a pit below the barn and applied by injection primarily in the fall. The Planning Commission has reviewed the conditional use permit criteria and public testimony at the January 28th Planning Commission meeting. And the CUP number 1905 was approved unanimously with staff recommended conditions. The Commission here today can, it may uphold, deny, or amend the Planning Commission decision. And I will take any questions.
Are there any questions for Kevin this morning? Commissioner Karski.
The waste management, you said primarily in the fall?
Yes. So the pits are, from my understanding and what it was discussed, are generally available to contain one year of manure. But if there is a reason that the manure needs to be applied in the spring or some other time of year when the crops are not in the field, then they can go out and inject it. But the target time is during the fall, after the crops are out.
Have we ever had a condition where waste management is only done in the fall and only by injection? Or don't we micromanage that way?
Typically, we don't micromanage the time of year. We can, the ordinance does require injection of any liquid manure. So that is part of the ordinance as it is. And the, as part of the application of liquid manure, there are setbacks from dwellings. There's setbacks from creeks as part of that application requirement.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions for Kevin? All right. If the proponent, if there's anyone here, this is a public hearing. So first item would be to allow any of the proponents, people in favor of this plan who'd like to speak. You're welcome to come forward at this time. You don't have to if you don't want to. Okay. If any opponents, is anybody that'd like to speak against this application? Okay, if you come forward, just give your name and your address. That'd be great.
You bet. Steve Anger, and this is my wife Darla Anger. We live at 47335 271st Street, Sioux Falls. Basically, our farm operation is, we're a mile south of the Walmart and 85th Street. And I think all of you have had the chance to review the letter that I sent in. Is that correct? And give you guys a little bit of background. I farmed this farm for a long time. As far as livestock facilities, my furrowed finish until Sioux Falls proximity came too close to us. We had 3,000 head hogs in our farm. Currently have 100 head of stock cows on that location. And my son, just off of 85th and Cliff, has got stock cows there. Our intention originally, when we put the grove in out there in 2006, was to eventually move our farmer operation out to that area. Since that time, we've had the opportunity with some neighbors and a couple of large landowners to increase our operation in Lincoln County. And at the current time, we've got ground that's in manure management programs with the dairy down by Vibeberg. We get manure out of 6,000 cows down there. Just east of Worthing, we've got 440 acres that we leased that's in the manure management program. There's two 2,400-head barns on that section that we get manure from. So I'm familiar with that. And also, a piece of property that we're selling in conjunction with this is south of Sioux Falls and Minnesota Avenue, south of Highway 18, that we have two hog barns in the same section. We've got tentative approval by an individual buying that farm to put a hog barn in. We would receive that manure on other properties. So my issue isn't with hog barns, livestock facilities, because we're producers also. What my and our problem with this is the thing that's come up, just taken sale, this farm and a couple others we've got. And we've had a machinery auction. It's twofold. One, my health. I've got to cut back. And kind of gave an ultimatum from my heart doctor that either I slow down or nothing happens. Or nothing's, or something's going to happen to me. And he said he can get me a year if I keep on doing what I'm doing, or five to 10 if I slow down. Secondly, it's economics. We ran a large farm operation. We're in four counties. We started out on rented ground, never owned any ground until we bought this property. And currently, my son's cutting back. We've cut back by about a third of our acreage, operating predominantly in Lincoln County now. And he's got an opportunity by selling this farm for us to keep moving forward, for him to be more financially stable, for me to have a little bit of retirement, and keep going on in the future. Because we know with the location where I live, we, traffic is a problem. Right between Minnesota and Western Avenue, right on that T blacktop. And, you know, we've got eight to 11,000 cars a day, according to Lincoln County survey, by our place. So we've got the opportunity now to take and move south in the next two years to another site, which prompts part of selling this. The original decision to sell this came back in, it would have been about the 10th of September. And then we were in negotiations with our bank and our lenders. And we went through mediation in the second week, third week of October, October 23rd. We agreed to sell this property, some other property, and some machinery. And at that time, we had some people out there looking at the 40 acres worth the grove and that is, which would be, our driveway is directly across from the driveway, or one of the driveways directly across from where the hog barn is proposed. And we had an individual out there, a real estate agent in Sioux Falls here and a couple others that contacted us. One of them was Brett Merkel. We'd had an individual out there. They looked at the property. We're looking for a 40-acre site to put an equestrian facility on. And now, at that time, we had visited a little bit, visited with our lender. And we came to agreement that we would take and go to auction with these properties. Now, this was, like I said, back in October. It was public knowledge after the 23rd of October. After we signed up with Wester Atkins and for the auction, which is being held this coming Thursday on that piece of property, we talked to our current lender that we've got a farm operating alone with. And he's familiar with the past history there. And he thought, well, you know, why don't we be a good neighbor and we'll just offer it to Guydies to begin with? And that was in our agreement with Wester Atkins. If they took it, then they would receive a percentage of that. And if not, we would go to auction. My son contacted Orin. They had some talks. The amount offered was less than 50% of the last piece of property, which was shown or talked about prior in the planning and zoning meeting. And so we decided to take it to auction. And the same day that our signs went up on the auction is the same day the planning and zoning signs went up. And, you know, having an auction now that had been scheduled almost two months prior to when he applied for the permit, to us is quite suspect and to be quite honest, the balance of the neighborhood. And so I guess I respectfully ask you guys to deny this. Whatever happens with the new owner, that's up to them. And I've got, like I said, I've got nothing against hog barns. And right now, you know, we didn't continue hog production because we were fair to finish. And we were predominantly livestock for a number of years. But when Sioux Falls got close and we actually got denied by Lincoln County, we made the decision to quit hog production there and then move with cattle and stuff in another direction. So, I mean, I've, we've been on both ends. And, you know, whatever happens after the sale, if somebody decides to do that, that's fine. But please don't, this is a financial, potential financial hardship for my son and for us. Because we've had a lot of interest in it. We've had a lot of interest in the two north acreages. And we've had a lot of interest in the whole property and not just by farm, you know, or by people that are going to farm it or will lease it out. So, I don't know. You guys got any questions for me or?
Any questions? Commissioner Benega.
Mr. Anger, could you just clarify, when you said that you received an offer that was 50% of what you perceived the value to be, was that at the same time that the signs went up? Before or after the signs went up?
That was our agreement with, was prior that we would offer it to Guydies. Just being a good neighbor, because there were some hardship feelings when we got in there to begin with. And the gentleman that sold me that farm and rented that farm, he rented me my first farm, which is, they're all in the city, Sioux Falls now. But on Western Avenue and Southeastern Avenue, when I was a junior in high school. And Sam Spears, who shipped his laundry in Surval towels. And Sam was a real good mentor to me. And, you know, our thought at that time that was then to offer it, that was the first week of December. And at that time, our agreement with Wester Atkins was that if we sold the piece privately, of course, then they would get a proceeding of that. And then that would not, would not go to auction. So my son talked to Orin. That's what he came up with, was 5,000 bucks an acre. The last piece of property in that area was 10,002 or 10,003, which they purchased, which is kitty corner across the intersection from our property. So, and considerably above the auction appraisal value.
Thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions? Commissioner Karski.
When was that last sale? How long ago?
I think it was, it was either two or three years ago.
Okay.
So, I mean, and yeah, ground values have come down some. But from what, we had an appraisal done on that property in 2014 by Wayman Land and Auction, because then we were doing some refinancing. And the pre-auction appraisal that came in by Wester Atkins, we were within $500 of what our 2014 appraisal was. So, you know, and that was within the last five months.
Sure. One more question?
So, can you scroll down, Trish, to the other maps that show the two tracks, track three and four? Keep going. Keep going. There we go. So you own what's listed as track three there? Is that correct?
Yeah, it would be, track three is a 40 out of the 240 wheel.
Okay, so if you scroll down a little bit, one more, that's track four, that's the other. So you're, you own those two tracks, so you're planning on subdividing and selling off with, building eligibility, is correct?
The way that the auction is handled is they will sell one tract, get the high bid, sell the next tract, get the high bid. The way that the auction is handled is they will sell one tract, get the high bid, sell the next tract, get the high bid, take a bid on the south quarter, a hundred and sixty acres that's left. Then they will have a combined bid for the two forty. Because we've had, and, and this is pretty common in some land auctions where you have other tracts. We'd have one eligibility go with each forty, and we've retained four eligibilities on the balance of the quarter. Or if the whole two forty is sold, they get all six eligibilities.
So there's six eligibilities on the quarter of land there?
In a two forty, it'd be an eighty and a quarter.
Okay, okay.
So it, we, we've had a lot of interest. Originally, when I put that grove in, we, we went through NRCS. And we put in two thousand and six, our plan, or my plan at that time, was when Sioux Falls pushed us out, and I think I mentioned this before, I'd build my retirement home, we'd move that direction. But, and that's kind of why we located it there, the site and the topography of the ground. And we've had, you know, which, which our realtor can verify, we've had a lot of interest in that site as a separate forty, or in different combinations of the farm, including the whole thing. And we got one lender in Sioux Falls here that's already had seven applications approved for that farm. You know, I don't know what, what value or what lending limit they can get. It's, I, it, it's important to us, and I think it should be important to everybody in the community, that we don't limit my value by doing something that's preempted by our decision to sell or, or past histories. So, and I respectfully ask you guys to deny it. What, what happens after that, if somebody wants to build five hog barns, that's up to the people in the community. But as of now, I'm one of those two.
One more question, if I may. Your offer to sell, was that the entire tract or just?
No, he was interested in entire tract.
So you were wanting to sell the whole thing, not just those two?
They were interested in, was the same as they had been interested prior when I bought it. So we just gave them the same offer that they and I had received when I purchased it.
Any other questions, Mr. Inger? Anybody else who'd like to speak opposed to this project? If you could give your name and address, please?
My name is Trepp Nagel, I live at two six three nine eight four hundred and sixty-first Avenue. It's exactly one mile south of the proposed property, or the proposed hog, hog building. My wife and I just purchased the property right out a year ago. And our goal was, is that we wanted to get outside of the city limits of Sioux Falls and, and take a home at the time that needed quite a bit of value increase and remodel that home, build a home of our dream. We own forty acres in that particular area. It's relatively secluded. The road that is on four hundred and sixty-first Avenue is a, an impact road, a gravel base road with fenced in and slough. And if you could see on some of the maps, that is adjacent to and then connected to my property. The road is in disrepair, probably fifty percent of the year, whenever we have high waters of any type whatsoever. Our concern is twofold. One, I bought a property for investment value. Putting a hog building exactly one mile of the prevailing wind that comes to my home at all times will not increase the value of my property under any circumstances. It will decrease, especially since I am in the process of putting on about a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar renovation to my home. I definitely would not make that decision based off of someone decreasing and, and an executive at some time possibly wanting to buy the little oasis that I have now, may not be as interested in that property. The second thing being the road condition with increased travel, anything at all that will have to go back and forth for that. That road is not capable of handling that at the current state. We, we argue with the Wall Lake Township multiple times a year because it is literally underwater, barricades do already go on that road. I do not foresee that this will increase the quality of the road or increase the quality of value of my property that I have put a tremendous amount of time, energy and money into already. So I very much so disagree with the decision to have that. Having increased quality and property of other people buying and putting up nicer homes in the area is not going to decrease my property, it will increase my property. So I would urge the, the council to definitely look at the others that are in the area. Not trying to take somebody's income away from them by any means whatsoever. But I, I don't believe where we are located, that structure would do any value to my property.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Barth.
Just a question, when you moved out there, you knew it was zoned agricultural in that area, didn't you?
That is correct, yes, sir.
And do you think that your presence should preclude anyone from building any other farm operations?
No, sir.
If so, how far away should it be? If it's out of sight and you can't smell it and it's not poisoning the water?
If, if that would be the case where it cannot be smelled, I, I grew up in the state of Iowa in agriculture my whole entire life, my family farms. We have a lot of, we have over five hundred dairy cattle. And I am very familiar with agriculture. I'm not trying to take anything away from somebody else's income or their ability. I'm merely voicing my concern on, on my property. Farmland, I, I understand. I just wanted to at least
Make sense, thank you.
At least give my opinion.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Anyone else who would like to speak against this property? Or against this application, I apologize. Good morning, if you could give your name and address, please?
My name is Renee May, and my address is two six four zero one four hundred and sixty-first Avenue, Hartford, South Dakota. I live across the road from the gentleman that just spoke. And I'm opposed to the confinement. I agree with the Ingers. I was one of them that sent a letter also. And I guess my major point here, I'm not a good speaker in front of people. But anyway, I agree with the Ingers and the gentleman that spoke before me. But it was such a coincidence that the signs went up for sale on the property, and then the next thing we know, the confinement was already approved by you people. A common person didn't even know what was going on and it was already approved. The sign isn't any bigger than the screen behind you. And they only have to tell people that live within a half mile radius that this is going on. So by the time we knew there was a confinement going up, you guys had already approved it. I guess five days is all it, the sign has to be up, is what we were told.
Any questions for Ms. May?
So I think it's a coincidence at best that we got a confinement once the signs went up for sale.
Commissioner Karski.
We haven't approved anything, the zoning board did look at this and it's being appealed to us. If I could, from either Kevin or Scott, what is the requirement for posting on those signs and that type of thing so that we, just for clarification?
Yes, Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. Yes, you is correct, it is one half mile for a CAFO for notice sending letters. And then it is five days prior to the meeting that the conditional use permit sign has to be placed.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, Kevin, so we also though publish it, right?
No, not for CAFOs. Not, it's not for a conditional use permit.
Oh, it's when it's appealed that it gets put in?
No, not for a conditional use.
Has it on it, right?
Agendas have it on it, yes. And the agendas are, are posted on, online.
So we send a postcard to people within five hundred feet or half a mile?
And for CAFOs, it's a certified letter that's sent out.
We need to use the microphone.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, Ms. May, thank you.
My stuff, my husband actually was driving home from work one day and saw the sign. And like I said, it's not a big sign, that's the only way we found out about it. Because there is nothing written anywhere.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Benega.
Excuse me, so you did not get a certified letter that said that it was an application, or are you outside that half mile?
I'm a mile south. Right across the road from the gentleman that just spoke.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else here today that would like to speak against this application? Good morning. If you could just give your name and address, please?
My name is Larry Fossum, we live at forty-six zero eight nine two sixty-third Street, Hartford, South Dakota. We're the folks that live just to the west of where the property is. And I'm kind of on both sides of the fence. I'm for it and, and I'm not against it, but I'd rather not see it there. But at the same token, if it's going to be put there, Orin and I have talked about it and, because I'm the one that has that bar in that church that's just past the corner. So my concern, just like the Zion Lutheran Church that's a mile down there, is, you know, the smell and things like that. But I also live in the country, so I understand that. I was born and raised around that kind of stuff, so I'm not against that. But what I had mentioned at the prior meeting that we'd had was that if Orin's going to put that there, and Orin and I have talked as well, is that it be down as close as it could be to his grove, because he has his own property there with a grove around it. And that there be some type of a shelter belt grove put around that building. Because when I moved out there, I have horses and, and I like being out in the country. But I like seeing trees and animals and stuff like that, not a hog confinement shed. Not that it would be an eyesore, but I just think it would be much prettier if there was a grove around it. So the only question or the only thing I brought up last time was that if that was going to be okayed, that there'd be some type of a shelter belt or grove put around it so that it just, it's just another building back in there. And as long as the manure thing that is going to be dispersed is done, you know, at a reasonable time, as long as Orin pays attention to the fact that if we have a wedding or, you know, it's kind of hard to deal with funerals, but if you had a wedding coming up, we don't take it out there two days before. And I know when we had that other meeting, the people down at Zion had brought that same thing up. And I think Orin will watch out for that, so that doesn't happen. So, along with the, you know, just making it so it looks pretty nice, I don't have a real problem with that. So I'm kind of either side of that fence, as long as it's taken care of in a, in a good demeanor and kept up nice. We live in the country. But it's next to my building, my church and my property as well, so it's going to affect the value of my property as well. But I live in the country, so.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak against this application? Okay. Mr. Geide, did you want to make any comments at this time before we open it? Does anybody on the commission have questions for Mr. Geide? Commissioner Karski.
I didn't mean to be first, but I can go. Talk to us a little bit, Mr. Geide, about your investment in this property, what type of technology you're going to be using for odor, odor control? What, what science is being done? Are you planting trees? I mean, can you talk to us a little bit about your plan?
Well, I've lived at this property my whole life. So I had hogs back in the eighties, they put me through college, they were outdoor hogs. So this is just another way to diversify my income. I'm more or less after the manure aspect for fertilizer to put on my ground. So that's kind of why this is going on. Engineering is all done by A1 Solutions. Paul Coswell is the one I've been dealing with. Supposedly that you got a letter from him in your packet. And then I handed one out from this Craig Lucas. He built one of these buildings about six miles west of me. And all that states is, is that I was talking to these people long before the Ingers offered me the property. Now Steve says they put their signs up first. I was two days ahead of when their real estate signs came up. And that can be verified through the planning and zoning or even with Wester Atkins. So I kind of dispute where he's coming from there. I understand where he's coming from, that maybe I'm going to devalue their property. That close to Sioux Falls, I think they're going to get compensated well. So I'm not buying any of them forties, I guess, I'll just put that out there now. I have no interest in them, maybe in a quarter, just depends where it comes with price. So, these people that talked about devaluing their property, they're more or less acreage people. There's a CAFO just a half a mile south of them. And I didn't hear anything, comments about that one. And that's the Alderson CAFO, which is a beef, beef CAFO. And I would think that would be just about as smelly as my hog one, but nothing was said about that one. So I'm actually further away with my project than the one that has already existed in there. I guess that's about all I have, unless you got some more questions?
Yeah, question about the, the manure, the application?
That's all hired done. We, we hire somebody, I'm working with this Craig Lucas, it's got the other building out west. We get these folks that come in, that's all they do for a living is apply manure. And then we'll, we'll try to do it in the fall. Spring is kind of tough, it gets muddy and rainy, so we can't be out there tearing everything up. So it'd be just kind of a fall application deal.
Prevailing winds most of the time, south to north, has anybody?
Southeast, northwest.
Southeast to northwest, okay. So the, the nutrients would all be spread on your own property then?
Correct, knifed in, yes. And I, this past fall, I got some, because I was kind of for this Alderson CAFO, because he didn't have enough property to put all his manure on, so he applied some to mine this past fall and they knifed it in. And I didn't hear any problems with that one.
Any other questions for Mr. Geide? I'm curious about the trees and whether the landscaping plan around the barn?
Yeah, I'll build, I'll put a grower trees, I'll even put a berm to the west if, if that satisfies Larry. Put some trees on top of that. But if, you know, where they kind of got my site planned is kind of a low, low area, so I can't hardly go any further east to my grove than where I'm at. Otherwise we'll have some issues with drainage then. But yeah, I will try to make it appealing, because I go by that, my folks live to the corner and then north. So I go by that place maybe four, four to six times a day. So I'll be definitely involved with it.
Okay, any other questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Barth.
So Orin, are you making any other changes with your other animals that you have, like the bison or any of that?
Well, you can't confine them, so, and they're only
Well, I meant, are you going to keep the bison, are you going to keep the other animals?
I got beef too, I keep, I'm going to have all three, beef, bison and hogs, I guess. Yeah, I'm going to keep everything. I'm actually taking some farm ground out of production, sowing it to grass so I can move my bison further to the north. Now I think I got a letter, or I seen a letter that Steve wrote to you folks about I having other properties that maybe be better suited, which would be further east of my place by a mile. Well, my footprint there is going to be actually worse than where I'm at now for people that be living in proximity of it. So where I'm putting it now, I think is the best, best for me. Maybe it's not going to make everybody happy, but I'm trying to make a living. I was here long before these folks all moved out here, so, as far as I know. Anything else?
Any other questions? All right, thank you. So, discussion, motion?
Madam Chair, as you know, I am on the planning commission and we discussed this and stuff a few weeks ago. And there are some conditions attached to this project that hopefully can make it better for the neighbors. But, you know, every time we have an issue of anything almost, the neighbors, I don't care if it's a cell tower, a, a dog kennel, a, a solar farm, people think it should be somewhere else. And there are people that live somewhere else also that aren't going to like it. In fact, we, we have more of these issues from that last meeting that are going to be In fact, we, we have more of these issues from that last meeting that are gonna be addressed next week in our joint meeting with the City Council. Where's that to, well, anyway. I, I think that when we look at land use, doesn't it make sense that properties zoned agricultural be used for agriculture? Or should we build houses every forty acres, take it out of production and still expect to eat? I think that this is zoned ag, this is an ag project. The technology is advancing rapidly. And I think that even going forward someday with genetic modifications, we might have hogs whose crap doesn't stink. That day is not today, unfortunately. But when that happens, we can build these plants right in Sioux Falls. And wherever you go, there's, there's issues. I mean, living in Sioux Falls, the rels plant has been known to smell. And would we do away with two thousand jobs to get rid of smell twice a year? I don't think so. So, I do support this project, and I'll wait and listen to the discussion, but I'll make a motion when needed.
Commissioner Karski?
Ag is kind of a smelly industry. And, you know, I look at the request for doing an ag-related project on ag-zoned land, it, it just makes sense. I mean, we're not being asked to put a nuclear waste disposal or rezone it to, put a, some sort of prison or that type of thing there. You know, less, maybe what people would consider less desirable even than ag. I'm, I'm fully supportive of allowing this CAFO to go through. It seems like we're following the rules that we, we set, and it's in line with what an ag-zoned property is to be used for. It's never an easy decision, and I, I do understand all the competing emotions that go with wanting this or not wanting this. I guess my question is, when we make, so we don't get caught in the same trap we did just a few minutes ago, do, when we, if we make a motion, are we, is a motion to approve it, to approve the CAFO or to approve the denial of it? I'm just curious, point of order, I.
If I may, we, we approved it at the Planning Commission, so we would uphold or reverse the Planning Commission decision.
Anybody else? Commissioner Benica?
Well, I will make the same comments that I've heard both commissioners make. Unfortunately, it is an emotional issue, but our responsibilities as commissioners are the legal responsibilities we have for statutes and ordinances and governance. And I don't think we're violating any of the things I just said with this particular development. We can't be involved in the economic piece of this, because frankly, that changes with ebbs and flows, and that's not part of our decision-making process for projects that work or don't work. That's something that the investors have to deal with. So, I will be supporting this, because I think it does meet our criteria. I do think the SDSU Extension Office and A1 Development Solutions has talked about the improvements in the construction process and confinement issues, so I, I don't see a legal issue to delay this, to be honest.
Okay, I would agree. Kevin, I have one question. Is there any condition, I was looking through this, about any kind of planting of trees or anything?
No, it was discussed at the Planning Commission meeting, but there was no condition that was established. So, if you would like to, you could add that as a condition to plant trees.
Okay.
Typically, if we add tree planting, we, we tie it to, say, being designed by the Minnehaha Conservation District or something similar to that. So, that way, when it comes with, it, it's, has a design by a professional, so.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
So, Kevin, then when, if the applicant were to bring his plan to you for actual building permit and stuff, that, then you would make an assessment of that?
Yeah.
Commissioner Karski?
The only concern I have about, you know, we, we think that planting a tree row will be a positive thing, but there's no scientific, I mean, no science behind that. It could actually change, you know, wind flows, you know, to, for a certain area. And I'm reluctant to, I mean, other than making it appear better, it might, for a period of time, make it look better, be more visually appealing, but we could actually change the science behind what goes on out there. So, if there was somebody that came to me and said, yes, if you plant a tree row, it'll reduce smells or whatever, but I'd be reluctant to force that on, as a condition at this point.
Mr. Gaddy? Would you like to come forth?
In regards to planting that trees, I kinda agree with you. I, I'd be willing to help Larry, you know, plant trees on the west side of that, so he don't have to look at it. But on the north side, there's nobody that's really bothering. I'd like to keep that open if I can, so like you say, we don't box that smell in there. So, if we can keep that northwest and southeast flow of air coming, I think that'd be better all the way around. And then it'll get dispersed and not just hang there. So, that was my only comment. Do you have anything else?
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to uphold the Planning Commission decision.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion and second, or roll call vote?
Karski?
Yes.
Barth?
Aye.
Benica?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
All right, thank you, everyone, for coming this morning. Okay, that takes us to next item, item eleven, which is a briefing on Lifescape programs. And we are fortunate to have Jessica Wells with us this morning. Good morning, Jessica.
Good morning. I am Jessica Wells with the Lifescape Foundation. And Steve Watkins, our CEO, was on your agenda, but he was called to appear to work with appropriations. So, you've got me this morning. Thank you for giving us a little bit of time to update you briefly on our programs. So, as you're probably aware, being from Sioux Falls and the area, Lifescape started as crippled children's hospital and school in response to the polio epidemic in nineteen fifty-two, and Sue Vocational for the Mentally Retarded in nineteen fifty-eight would be our adult service side. In twenty fourteen, we combined to make Lifescape. Currently, we serve over five thousand five hundred individuals, children and adults, across South Dakota from sixty-one counties and forty different school districts. Of interest to you, forty percent of those individuals live in Minnehaha County. So, a majority live within our, our area. We have a specialty hospital and inpatient rehab center. It has eighteen beds. It's located at our Twenty-Sixth Street facility. It's the only pediatric rehab hospital in the region. And later, I'll talk about if children are not supported there, where their options are. We also have an intermediate care facility, which is our children's residential area. We are licensed for up to ninety-six children. Because of our facilities built in the nineteen fifties and the current children that we support, we are only able to support about sixty-five in that space. A lot of the children that we support in this program area have autism and challenging behaviors. And then we also have a medically complex residential unit for children with co-occurring mental health and physical needs. We have a specialty school as well. Our school is located alongside our residential area. It has a hundred and twenty children right now. Over fifty of those children live in surrounding towns and are brought in by their school districts to attend school with us. We also have three specialty outpatient clinics. About two hundred and fifty people a day come through those doors. We have one here in Sioux Falls, one in Rapid City, and one in Sioux City. The family support three sixty services allow, they are state resources that allow families to access funding so that their children can remain in their homes. This is a, a great program, allows families to stay together and closer and get the services that they need. Another program is our Pathways to Life. It's a part of our specialty school. It's for transition age children. They are typically ages sixteen through twenty-one. This program helps children learn daily life skills, how to live independently, recreation skills, and workforce development. Our Adult Supported Employment Program, this gives folks meaningful work. If they are interested in having jobs, we support them in those roles with job coaches and individuals that attend those employment with them. We currently have ninety adults that are in that program. Another area is our Adult Day Services. This program has about four hundred and fifty adults that are supported. When we were talking with parents about what keeps you up as night, at night as a parent, even if your kids grow up, they're still your kids. And these parents said they have two things. One, they want their children's lives to matter. And second, when they're gone, they wanna ensure that someone is there to care for them and make sure that they stay safe. And that is one thing that Lifescape helps meet that need and ease as parents. So, the Adult Day Service Program helps give meaning as well to their lives. Our Adult Residential Program, we've got thirty-eight homes here in Sioux Falls. Two hundred and eighty-one residents live in those homes, and then we have another a hundred and forty-six individuals who live in their own homes or apartments. And we support them anywhere from a couple hours a week, maybe to stopping in every day. So, varying levels of support available. One thing that we've tracked is the number of diagnoses that children have in our care. We have over three hundred different individual diagnoses of children that are supported. And fifty-nine percent of our children have three or more diagnoses. So, that's something that we are seeing an increase in is co-occurring disorders, many involving mental health, and some also those physical, more medical diagnoses. We have one child that has fifteen diagnoses. So, the, if you think of individuals that we support on a bell curve, we are increasingly serving the fringe of those folks who are unable to be mainstreamed. If an individual does not receive support in South Dakota, their options are to go to Denver, to Omaha, or to Minneapolis. This is where our Pediatric Specialty Hospital really fills a niche in that the full-service hospitals, we have great partnerships with Sanford, Avera, and Rapid City Regional to meet kind of that post-acute care need of individuals recovering from surgery or from accidents. A few things new that are coming up. We are excited to open a new Autism and Child Development Center here in Sioux Falls. It's one of our outpatient clinics. It will primarily have our behavioral care. I don't know if you've recently heard, the statistics of one forty children will be diagnosed with autism. We have seen a growth in that area of our services over the last several years, and we don't see that declining at all. We are also, our school continues to grow as school districts continue to have more and more challenging children, and maybe only a few children in needing those services. Our school continues to grow, expanding classrooms and our crisis capabilities. So, a child may be just fine most of the time. Right now, we're supporting a young man from Rapid City that, most of the days, he's great. But on days he goes into crisis, there were not any resources available. We find the same thing in Sioux Falls. So, we are seeing an increase in that crisis intervention, crisis care area. We are also working on several collaborative partnerships with Dakota State University, really working on technology to completely surround an individual so that they can control more of their environment and more of their daily life. We're excited to be a test site for some of the technologies that they're developing and share the information that we've got with them as well. And we have several collaborative partnerships going on with Black Hills Works, one of which is we are sharing a psychologist to help with autism evaluations. Currently, there's a nine-month waitlist. If you have a child with difficulties and you suspect autism, waiting nine months to even get evaluated is just not acceptable and not okay. So, we are excited to have, the psychology services in South Dakota are very short in supply but high in demand. So, we are excited on that partnership as well. One update, I think, is probably since last year that we've got some good data on, is that many of the adults we support in twenty, the summer of twenty seventeen, lost their federal funding for food assistance. They were able to access the National School Lunch Program funding. And we, the average income for ninety percent of the adults that we support is under twelve thousand dollars a year, which is twenty-five percent the national poverty level. When we were looking at that, looking, I work in the foundation office, so looking at where our highest needs gonna come from, where support is needed the most, we found, discovered that food assistance was going to be one of our top areas that we would be asking regular citizens to step forward, our, our government partners to step forward to help meet that need. It definitely did become one of our highest areas of fundraising for adult services. That and with rent assistance, affordable housing is always important, and that's one area that we continue to see a high need in. Several of our adults are on a fixed income of their social security. They might get seven hundred and fifty-three dollars a month to pay rent and other expenses. With that, if that comes to about seven hundred and forty-four dollars, that leaves them nine dollars to pay for what used to be paid for by the school lunch program, which was their breakfast and their lunches. So, nine dollars to cover that for a whole month has become an increased hardship. We appreciate the support that we get from the county. We appreciate that you are a part of that fabric, taking care of some of our most vulnerable in our population. As you consider your next budget, please consider our full request. We would appreciate that. Nine dollars is hard to stretch, and support from the county definitely helps that as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Jessica? Commissioner Barth?
So, that nine dollars would have to cover haircuts or all those kinds of things? Recreation, clothing, yes?
Yes.
Are you receiving people from Redfield and stuff these days?
We do occasionally. So, usually Lifescape is one of the last stops, especially for folks in crisis. Their next stop would be Redfield, which is truly institutional care. The state has a plan to continue to decrease numbers of folks living at Redfield. We've been able to accept a few of those if our facilities are unable to accommodate the individual's needs. And then, of course, shortage in staff has also been one of our limiting factors of being able to support folks, especially from Redfield.
And if I may, the staff, you do have a lot of turnover, don't you, in staff?
Yes, we are at about a forty-six percent turnover rate. Our highest turnover rate is in our direct support professionals, which is a demanding job and takes a special heart to also, yes.
Madam Chair, I'm gonna just philosophically speak. The state has, is throttling back in Redfield. They throttled back down in Yankton. They throttled back in the penitentiary. They're abdicating their responsibilities and pushing them off onto nongovernmental agencies or counties, and just complaining.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you so much for being with us this morning, Jessica. Give Steve our best.
Yes.
All right. So, the next item, item twelve is a brief from the Sioux Falls Chamber of Commerce Agribusiness Division. Holly, good morning.
Good morning.
Excuse me.
Good morning. And thank you all so much for letting me present on the programs of the Agribusiness Division as well this morning. For those of you who don't know me or don't remember me, I am Holly Raider, and I am the Agribusiness Division Manager of the Sioux Falls Area Chamber of Commerce. Last time we spoke, I was only just dipping into this position. And now, after being here for five, not five and a half, one and a half years, I can definitely say how excited I am to present to all of you today some of the exciting things that have happened over the past year and what is yet to come, specifically speaking to the Agribusiness Division of the chamber. So, the Agribusiness Division advanced and promotes the Sioux empire as an agricultural center through actions that provide a higher visibility of the industry and programs to enrich the sustainability and stability of rural society and those associated with businesses involved in agriculture. And what a neat morning to be a. And what a neat morning to be a part of your meeting after listening to everything I have had the opportunity to listen to this morning. So which actions and which programs am I talking about whenever I talk about our mission as a division? And a few of these actions would be our annual Sioux Empire Livestock Show, which we actually just wrapped up, the sixty-sixth annual, our Ag Appreciation Day, and National Farmers' Day at the Barn. So kind of going down our list of programs throughout the year, as I just mentioned, we just wrapped up sixty-six years of ag tradition out at the W H Lyon Fairgrounds Expo Building. And what a week it was. We host six purebred cattle shows and sales, open cattle shows, open hog show, an open market lamb show, open market goat show, the draft horse and pony pool, and a trade show featuring over sixty-five exhibits and three different themed days, which brings in approximately fifteen thousand visitors to the Expo Building in a short five-day livestock show. So, as I mentioned, we just wrapped up on the twenty-sixth of January. And I can say that we appreciated the addition to the lights in the north end of the Expo Building this year. And I can also say that future investments are always greatly valued out there at the facility, as well as other events throughout the year, and potential national livestock shows that might be able to come to town, as well as ag-related occasions that use this type of venue. And whenever I talk about success of our show, I always like to include numbers. However, because it was less than a month ago, it is hard to present any numbers on how we did financially yet. It was a successful year, I can say, but specifics are not quite there yet. So soon, coming. And I know Commissioner Bender, you are now coming to our Chamber Board Meeting, so you might see the numbers firsthand, one of the first ones to see. So look forward to that in March. So continuing on down the list of what the Sioux Falls Area Chamber of Commerce Agribusiness Division does in terms of actions and programs, I'm going to move into August. However, we start planning in May of the year for Ag Appreciation Day, which has always traditionally been the Wednesday of Sioux Empire Fair Week. It's a complimentary lunch that brings in, last year brought in over thirty-five hundred ag producers and ag-related individuals from, to a lunch from eleven to one out at the W H Lyon Fairgrounds in front of the grandstand. Last year, I was not able to report on what type of event this was, but now actually going through it for my first time as manager, I can say it's truly unique to have so many businesses give towards this event to feed all of our ag producers, farmers, and ranchers who come in for the day. We have over a hundred and twenty-five businesses who donate not only their time, but money to make sure that this is success each year. So mark your calendars for August seventh, two thousand and nineteen. It's sure to be a great year. Last year, we did implement some new programs within this occasion that kind of connected more with our unexperienced consumers. We incorporated a farm trivia and look forward to implementing a few other activities in years to come. Our Agribusiness Division members are very passionate about educating those within the city that might not understand where their food or their clothes comes from. So it's exciting being a part of a division so passionate. So moving right along to another program or action that the division is able to now call our own. Last year, I presented it as a vision, and we went through our inaugural National Farmers' Day at the Barn event on October twelfth of last year, and save the date for October eleventh of this year. We hosted two hundred and twenty visitors. These are all, like I said previously, unexperienced consumers who we encourage families and friends to all come out for a pumpkin patch and for, we had coffee and ice cream from Stenzland's, and we had just a nice community event. Because this day, this national recognized holiday falls in October of every year, on the twelfth, all of our farmers, as many of you had just heard again this morning, are either getting all of their fields cleared and ready to get everything going on to the next part of their year, or they are still struggling to get out into the fields, much like this past year. So this is a great day to be able to celebrate our farmers and appreciate them in a way in telling their story. And that was the big vision of this past year, and very excited about our second annual National Farmers' Day at the Barn on October eleventh. And as well as, you know, advancing and promoting the ag industry, this stands as the primary goal of the division. But all activities and functions of the division serve as opportunities to further agricultural education, as I just mentioned, as well as communication between the city and the ag community. As a division, we support each other's ag-related events, as well as those that maybe need to be more recognized within the state and even region. Like I like to tell people who don't understand what I do as Agribusiness Division Manager, I like to say I'm the ag cheerleader for the ag community in the Sioux Falls area, as well as the chief connector. Our division meets once a month, and in these division meetings, these are ag-related members of the chamber. And in these meetings, it is a great place for networking to see what someone else can use in their business to better something that they have moving forward in the year. So like you were just thanked a second ago by a different entity, I would also like to thank you for your continuous support. I look forward to future years in not only growing the recognition of the ag community here in the Sioux Falls area, but also success and partnership. So at this time, if there are any questions, I tried to stay within my seven to eight minutes brief time, and I know I was talking fast. So if there's any questions, please, please ask away.
Commissioner Karski.
First of all, Holly, thank you for being here. And just based on my knowledge of the long-term employment at the Chamber of Commerce, I'm wishing you well and hopefully someday the hundredth anniversary of the Sioux Empire Livestock Show. It might seem like a long ways away, but it doesn't take long to get there. A little bit about the mayor's roundup and sale of champions. You know, mostly the producers, those young producers in ag, how do they benefit from that? And can you talk a little, I heard some great things about it, so I don't want to say anything wrong. So if you could share any of that information about that, what happened there and some of the money raised?
This past year was a record year in terms of our mayor's roundup and sale of champions specifically. All of our young producers, our exhibitors, I mentioned the open shows earlier. Those open shows are for any age, but what you'll see most is those twenty-one and younger. Because in most states around the nation, that's until, that's the age of which you no longer can collect junior show points. And so that's just a little background on the area of why we have so much youth coming into Sioux Falls during that week. And, and we do. So the mayor's roundup and sale of champions, we allow our top five market hogs, our top five market cattle, and our top five market goats and market sheep to come, or top ten market hogs, sorry. So twenty-five animals total come to the mayor's roundup and sale of champions. This past, this past year was January twenty-fifth. It's a Friday night out of the Ramcoa exhibit hall. And we start actually the night with dinner and then go into our scholarship auction. And our scholarship auction is all donated auction items from our business community. And all of the proceeds from this scholarship auction go directly to our scholarship program. So it's either seniors going into college or college students already. And that's just a neat part of that night as well. And then moving into the sale of champions are the top twenty-five, the best market animals from the Sioux Empire Livestock Show. And it's amazing to see the support that comes out to that night. Last year, in two thousand and eighteen, we raised sixty-six thousand dollars in premiums that all go directly to those twenty-five exhibitors, twenty-one years and younger. And this year, on the twenty-fifth, we raised over one hundred and six thousand dollars of premiums that go directly back to these youth exhibitors. And coming from that background myself, I know that if they aren't already going into college or already in school, this money, part of it, is helping them get another project for the next year to do even better that next year. But for the most part, all of this money is going towards furthering their education. And, and that's, that's where the scholarship auction kind of came to be as well, is continuing the future of agriculture and making sure that people are able to do it. I mean, the cost of everything is going up, as well as tuition. So it's amazing to be a part of something like that night. Thank you for asking.
Yeah. Congratulations on that success. And I can tell by the excitement in your voice and your smile that you're very pleased with how it went, so congratulations.
It's, a lot of people don't see the behind the scenes of that week, but then to have a night like that, it definitely helps, for sure.
Any other questions?
I would just point out to Dean that I don't even think she drinks coffee.
I do. I'm not going to lie to you.
Well, thank you very much. It was a great presentation. We appreciate you taking the time to be with us this morning.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us to item thirteen, Consider a Motion to Declare a 2004 HP Design Jet Printer Surplus. Bill Hoskins, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bill Hoskins, Director of the Sioux Land Heritage Museums. This is to correct an oversight from 2012, seven years ago, and declare a printer surplus for the purpose of trade-in on the current printer. I think it was valued at two hundred dollars.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry that we have to spend time on this, but I'll make a motion to approve this unless Bill decides to keep it in the collection.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, sorry.
Karski?
Yes.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Benninger is absent. Thank you very much. It's item fourteen, Legislative Update. Carol Muller, right now. Carol and Craig have been busy keeping track of the legislature lately.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Office. Yes, Craig is in, Craig Dewey is in Pierre, left yesterday. And I believe Commissioner Karski is heading up later on today. So, yes, it's been a busier session than probably what we thought. Craig has a multi-page report that he wrote for you on Friday. And just wanted to go through and highlight a few things that are pertinent or of interest to you. Senate Bill sixty-five is the bill that would provide for the construction, renovation, improvement, remodeling, alteration, basically working on your courthouse, jails, incarceration, and that would be a sales tax. And that one is being pushed by Cottington County as they have needs that are up there. So Senate Bill sixty-five, that did pass out of the Senate local government and is awaiting a full Senate vote. Senate Bill one oh three is, was to provide for an annual transfer of certain unobligated state general funds into the local bridge improvement grant fund. And I know this is one that some of you have discussed in the past. That one failed in the Senate fourteen to twenty. Senate Bill one oh six is up tomorrow morning, and that one is primed by Senator Steinhauer from our county. And that would provide for a local option for bed, board, and booze tax. The other ones that I just wanted to mention to you was House Bill ten eighty, which is primed by Zickman in our county. That is the bill that would increase the property tax exemption allowed for certain veterans with a disability and the surviving spouses of certain veterans with a disability. Currently, it sits at one hundred thousand dollars is the exemption. They, first, the original bill has it at two hundred and fifty thousand. That is being amended at that time to take it only from one hundred thousand to one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then the last one that I want to mention is another one that you have had information about in the past, which is lowering the mill levy requirements that must be met to qualify for disaster funding. And that bill is awaiting a hearing in House State Affairs. So lots of activity. There is a lot of activity in Pierre going on as crossover day approaches.
Commissioner Karski?
Just a comment on Senate Bill one oh six, which is why I'm going to Pierre. Property taxpayers in many a county are funding what our public safety, our sheriff's department, our judges, our jail, law enforcement, et cetera, et cetera. And that portion of our budget grows by eight percent a year. And this local option, bed, booze, and board tax, would be obligated solely to public safety, is the way I understand the bill to be written. So that money would be used because our revenues increase by about two to two and a half percent a year, but that expense for public safety is about eight percent a year, and it's getting to be a bigger and bigger part. So this would help offset and kind of give the property taxpayer a little bit of relief from that continuously growing obligation that we have.
And I would just add that, you know, watching and being involved in the sheriff's liaison, watching the numbers at the jail, there is a direct correlation to folks that come in from out of town and go to events in Sioux Falls and then run into the criminal justice system. And this would be a way to allow them to share in the burden that that creates. And so I think that there is a lot of reasons that this makes a lot of sense, and it's an option to give local control to folks. And taxpayers would obviously have a say in that if they needed to. Commissioner Barth?
You know, Commissioner Bender, you brought up a good point there, which is an option. If the legislature votes for this, they are not raising taxes. We would have to take separate action to have that happen. But I think people have some understanding that their house is not drinking and driving. Why does it have to pay for the misbehavior of so many others? And if I might, going back to Senate Bill sixty-five, where we could raise taxes to help pay for jails and stuff, that wouldn't work retroactively, would it? I mean, could we, could we put in a sales tax going forward to help pay down our debt on the new jail expansion?
Commissioner Barth, I would say that that probably is something that could be explored. The one thing that I would mention is along with Senate Bill sixty-five, that is something that is automatically taken to a vote of the people. So there would have to be a lot of education that happens out there to understand the swap that would occur. So it's not something that the commission has the ability to do on their own. They would have to bring forward to a vote countywide.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. So that takes us to liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports this morning? Commissioner Karski?
Last week, I attended the Sioux Falls City Council's informational meeting at four o'clock. There Jill Franken and Aaron Surska from our office talked about the triage contract that the city was going to be, the city council was going to be voting on, first vote, and I think a second vote in two weeks or maybe next week, the contract. Basically, this doesn't mean that the city owns the triage project. We just needed a contract between, to funnel the money that we received from our healthcare providers to public research associates, to have a contract with them. And the city, the mayor graciously stepped forward and said that they would run it through them, that again does not imply ownership by the city of our triage, nor I don't think what they would want to own it is we, when we look at collaboration between the city, the county, the healthcare providers, the mental health care providers, and so many other people, ownership is going to be important. And it's one of the things that is a heavily discussed part of the triage project. So their approval of a contract does not imply ownership. It just is a vehicle that allowed us to make this work so that we can continue the project moving forward.
Thank you. It's exciting to see it continue moving forward, and we have great hopes for this contract and this consultant, what they'll be able to put together for everybody. Commissioner Barth?
We had a museum meeting last week, and having moved many, many, many artifacts out of the courthouse building, the courthouse museum, we found some other maintenance issues which were heretofore obscured by the pile of artifacts. Anyway, it's interesting to see that, and I just wanted to bring that up. And anyway, it's interesting to, to see that, and I just wanted to bring that up.
Okay, thank you. Any other liaison reports? Okay, next item is new business. Any new business? Hearing none. Any old, oh, Commissioner Barth? Okay, any old business?
I was taking a breath.
You're getting ready to make a motion to adjourn, I can tell. Okay, I take a motion to recess the Minnehaha County Commission meeting.
So moved.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We will adjourn for ten minutes and then come back for executive session. Okay? Thank you.